Good evening and welcome to the NINA School Board Candidate Forum. This evening's event is cosponsored by the League of Women Voters of Winnebago County and Fox Cities Advocates for Public Education. Thank you to members of both organizations for your time and effort in planning this forum. Please note that all questions being asked were submitted by citizens in the community. There may have been minor editing for length, but the content was not generated by sponsors. I'm Anna Olson and I will be your moderator for the forum. Debbie Drayer will be our timer. I'd like to welcome our candidates, Brian Epley, Tamara Haas, and David Williams. Our fourth candidate, Christian Sarr, is unable to be with us this evening. We will begin with candidates having three minutes to introduce themselves and provide background on why they wish to serve on the Board of Education. We previously determined through random choice that Mr. Brian Epley would be our starting speaker. I will read Mr. Sarr's statement at the end of the introductions. Following the introductions, each candidate will be given one and a half minutes to respond to each question again posed by citizens at large. There is no rebuttal, nor will there be closing remarks. Let's begin with Mr. Epley's opening statement.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for holding this forum, especially during the pandemic, educating voters this way is even more important. My first term on the board flew past in the blink of an eye. As I look back at all of the, all I've learned in the last three years, I'm struck by how much we accomplished. During the facilities planning phase and the referendum process, we had dozens of extra meetings on top of our regular meetings that it takes to operate the district. Reading articles, attending workshops and conferences and studying budgets has absorbed much of my free time. Of course, the last year has been difficult, to say the least, but through careful planning and a tremendous effort from our staff, we have kept our focus on education. My experience as an engineer helped guide me through learning the processes and functions of the school district through continued study of how it all works. Now I'm trying to use that experience in guiding the district. Our mission statement is Nina with pride ignited by a passion for excellence. The focus of our board is providing quality education to all students, and that process takes an enormous amount of planning. I have been honored to serve as the Board President for the last year. I take that responsibility seriously and do my best to maintain smooth operation of our meetings and to keep the board focused on the students, which I am thankful to say has been relatively easy since our group is so focused on the students and our mission. Serving on the board is not easy and it's not always fun. However, it is rewarding to see improving test scores, student achievements, dedicated staff who served the district over long careers, and now seeing tangible improvements to our facilities. One of my least favorite parts of this job is disappointing people. I always try to do what is right, however, no matter the issue, some people will inevitably think I was wrong. In those cases, I try to listen to the person and hear what they're saying. Sometimes through good communication, we can come to an understanding. I spent many hours educating people about the referendum. When you take the time to exchange ideas and discuss, it's amazing how we can come to understand each other. As the first board member listed on the website, I get a lot of phone calls, usually when people are upset. Again, I do my best to hear their concerns and help find a solution to the issue. While this job isn't all sunshine and it's absolutely worth it, we have a remarkable staff of dedicated individuals who continue to amaze me. The creativity and inspiration from our teachers is astounding. Our students are always reaching new heights and achieving incredible feats, both in academics and extracurriculars. That is why I love being on the board. We get to witness all of these accomplishments and hopefully we play a tiny part in helping them excel. With all the experience I've gained, I hope to see many more of these achievements. Thank you for listening today and with your vote, I hope the community will allow me to continue serving on the Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Epley, and now, Tamara Haas.
Hi, good evening. I'm Tamara Haas. I'm a 20-year resident of NINA. I'm a mother, married mother of three kids, all school age here in the city of NINA. And I've always had a passion for education. I can remember being a kindergarten student in public school in Denver, Colorado, going into my first day of kindergarten with Ms. Betty and how she inspired me to teach. And although I did not choose the traditional path of teaching, I've always found teaching very important in everything I've ever done, whether it was coaching students, you know, in volleyball or basketball or other sports or in any job that I've ever had. Taking that time out to impart knowledge that I have on someone else has always been a truly rewarding experience for me. When the lights go on and somebody learns something new that they may have been struggling with, it's truly rewarding for me. I wanted to join the board because two of our great members have chosen not to seek reelection. And it's another opportunity for me to take the time to research topics, understand the issues, listen to our fellow citizens in the community and understand what it is they want and expect, as well as understanding that, you know, COVID has provided us unique challenges and experience that I hope never come around again. But we still owe it to these students today to prepare them for the future and to give them the best that we possibly can. We need to be responsible for our budgets. We have a great responsibility to our taxpayers and our community with the new high school that's coming in and all of the improvements that are going to be taking place in all of the other buildings throughout the district. I wanted to take this time and this opportunity to, you know, impart the knowledge I have and the compassion for listening and ask that the voters, you know, give me that opportunity to serve them, their children, and the needs of this community, not only today, but tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas, and now David Williams.
Thank you. My name is David Williams. I come tonight with the hope of trying to lend my service to the NINA Board. I was fortunate enough to grow in a household that really pushed education to the forefront for myself and my brother to really reach as high as we could and learn as much as we could every day. My wife and I moved here in 2011, and one of the main reasons why we moved here was the school district. We knew we wanted to start a family and we wanted to make sure that we were in a, in a place that had a strong school district with amazing teachers and staff. We now have two young kids. My daughter will be in third grade next year and my son will be starting 4K next year, so that's pretty exciting on our end. One of the reasons why I wanted to join the board is just like Ms. Haas said, a couple of members were not coming back up, did not want to do another, another term, which I commend them for their work and I appreciate them for what they have done. I want to lend my, myself and my service to the community in any way I can. And with COVID being as it was this last year, it definitely was an experience for everybody. And then we also learned a lot, and I think moving forward, we can use those points and things that we learned to make our district even better. So hopefully I can help you in any way I can. I want to be a conduit to the community to bring things to the board and we'll find the best solution for the entire community for everyone involved. So hopefully, April 6th, you mark my name as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, and now I'm going to share my screen and read Mr. Christian Sarr's personal statement. Mr. Sarr writes, "I've lived in NINA since 2002. I have a son that is currently enrolled in NINA schools. I earned my BFA from UW Milwaukee and my MSITE from UW Stout. I have been a technology education teacher for 23 years. My first two years were at Muskego Norway School District and the last 21 were at Kimberly Area School District. I am running for school board to apply my skills as an educator to make NINA schools a better place for students to learn and grow. Things that I will, I would seek to accomplish as a school board member: ensure all teaching positions are filled with certified teachers, equitably fund all programs and deliver quality education to all students and reassure taxpayers that their money is being spent wisely and equitably." And with that, we're going to begin our first round of questions, and Ms. Haas will be responding first. The question has a little background, and it is this. "We received many questions about the target-based grading system, a color code of red, yellow and green to measure how well a student is understanding material. Green would mean a student is proficient, while red means the student needs to work on the concept. Some call target-based grading confusing and question how a letter grade is determined, impacting things like GPA and class rank for college admission. Others point out that this system clearly identifies what has been mastered and what still needs to be learned. The question for you, do you agree that this is a good way to assess student performance? Is this grading system a good tool to assess and communicate student performance?" And so we'll begin with Ms. Haas.
Sure. I think there's some confusion in the community when I have posed this similar question to various folks. I think there's confusion over traditional letter grade grading versus the red, yellow, green grading. They're not mutually exclusive. It's not like there's a choice just between one and the other. They're actually currently used in combination. So even though there is a red, yellow, green to assess individual skills and individual performance on an item, it still translates into a letter grade. I think that target-based learning is a great way to understand what individual skills within a subject that a student has mastered and ones that they need to continue to work on. I question the accountability and maybe the timeframes that students are given to repeat some of these and what that, what the ramifications of that are for their future and learning and understanding accountability. But as far as individual understanding of performance and specific skills base, it's great. But it's not mutually exclusive from, you know, our traditional ABC letter grading system, which is necessary for colleges and future activity.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. Mr. Williams, would you please respond?
The more I research into this, this grading system, the more I like it, the more I think it's, it mimics real life in many ways. When I'm working out on a job and I make a mistake and I need to, I have the opportunity to fix it and make it right. And that's real world experience. So the target-based learning is, I think, helps also with retention of knowledge, which could be, which can be lost sometimes in a traditional system where you're teach, where it feels like you're being taught to the test. So having the target-based learning be the system to move forward and will also help moving into a college setting where they move into a 1, 2, 3, 4 GPA setup as well. So I'm all for the red, yellow, green system.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll give our timer a chance to reset and then Mr. Epley will finish this round.
Thank you. Okay, all set.
Okay, Mr. Epley.
All right. I would definitely say it is different than the way we're all used to it, different than the way I went through school. And I think people have a hard time with change. And so educating people about the new system is really what's important here. In, I'm now living through it as a parent of an eighth grader who's using the system. And I'd say it's really been beneficial for him in being able to see the targets very clearly laid out and then be able to go back to any targets that he may have missed and, and correct what he did wrong and relearn the material to the point that he, he fully understands it. So, yes, I guess it's a good system and I think it's worth continuing with. One thing about this is we, the, the board asked the administration to kind of think outside the box and come up with a, a new system here. And this is what they brought forth, and I think it's important that we give them the opportunity to, to prove that it, that it can work, or if we need to make a change at a later date, that's a different discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Epley. All right, we're going to move on to the second question. Longtime NINA residents can recall the days, excuse me, when NINA was at the top of the charts in many, if not most, metrics, graduation rate, ACT scores, et cetera. After reviewing the DPI district report cards, NINA appears to be pretty average in comparison to other districts in the Fox Cities. NINA does not lead in any statistical category. In fact, in 2019, there were large gaps between student performance and district benchmarks for third grade literacy and eighth grade math. The question for you is, how can NJSD improve its academic performance? And we'll begin with Mr. Williams, please.
So with, with trying to improve academic skills, making sure, I, I think it kind of goes back into this last conversation with the red, yellow, green system of retention and making sure people are retaining the knowledge in which they are receiving. So letting that system kind of play out and start to kind of take hold in the system will, I think, also help with that. The other thing is, I, I feel like making sure that nobody is left behind in classrooms, so making, making sure that they're not falling behind, but again, the system working out the way it is. I think also offering mentoring and tutorship within the grade levels to help, have students help each other, move their way up and making sure that the tests themselves, if, if you're looking at them and again, it's, I don't like teaching to the test, but you have, you have to kind of work in the ballpark in which the test is being given. So to work on the skills that are closely related to those tests and making sure that they are beneficial to the student as much as possible is the best way to go.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Epley.
Right. Um, these have been problems we've been trying to address since before I got on the board and the last three years. Third grade literacy is an area that has been shown to be very important and in future future achievement, and we've tried a couple of different programs along the way. We're actually implementing a new one now to try to improve those scores. Similarly with math, we've been making strides over the last few years to update the math programs and change to a new curriculum that's having some good progress. But with, with all these things, it takes time to, to implement a new system and see the results from it. Most recently, we've tied a bonus structure to the, for the teachers, to the, to the, the report card for the schools in the district. So rather than tying it to the teacher review, it's actually tied to the, the school's performance, so that encourages the teachers to, to work together and make the whole school a better place and get a better score.
Okay, thank you very much. And finally, Ms. Haas.
Hi. When it comes to change in performance and understanding that the schools were high performing, from a business perspective, if you're looking at a decline in numbers for whatever reason, you would always want to go back and understand what the differences are between the time that you were performing at a high level and to maybe not performing at the same level today, and understanding what those differences are before enacting a change that you're not sure what the measurement of it is. So I would say we need to understand why there's the change in the first place. I mean, what, what changed in our teaching styles, what changed in our teaching structures? Is there something that changed in the environment for our students? Class size, class structure, and understanding what was making it work before, before we enact other changes and not understanding, are we actually enacting something that is going to meet the issues that we're facing with why literacy is where it's at and why math is where it's at? Arbitrary change for the sake of change to try something new, I don't think is the best route for a school program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. All right, we're going to move on to question number three. According to the DPI report card, 14.5% of students in the NINA public schools are racial or ethnic minorities. Yet the staff is predominantly white. Is this a concern? What is the board's responsibility to develop a staff that reflects the makeup of the students? Give you a second to think about that. And we'll begin with Mr. Epley.
Thank you. We actually started out this year by establishing our focus on equity. Equity is, is a large term that encompasses many different things from socioeconomic status to gender to race. And we've made a focus on that to establish a better practice with equity across our whole district. When it comes to actually hiring teachers, I don't think we've quite gotten to that element of it yet. But we are trying to make sure that the entire district is more inclusive for everyone in the district, including all of the students of, of any background.
Okay. Mrs. Haas, you're next.
I think for our students, it, we have to be fair, whether it's to our students or to our teachers, that we're bringing to them the best and the brightest. And that includes the best and brightest of everyone in an equal and fair manner. I don't think that we need to give preference to one over another, whether it's our teachers or our students. But we do need to be fair in giving everyone the same opportunity to have the job, perform the job and be there for our students. Yes, it's important to see yourselves represented in your community and, but I think we need to turn a, a blind eye and be decent human beings to each and everyone, regardless of, you know, what we all look like or, you know, what we believe. We need to be decent human beings and we need to give everyone that opportunity to be there for our kids.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. Give our timer a second to reset and then Mr. Williams, you'll be next, just as soon as Mrs. Drayer lets us know.
I'm set.
Okay, you're all set, Mr. Williams.
Yeah. I agree with equity. I, I believe having everybody included in this process needs to occur as students and as staff and teachers. I think that having very similar representation in the staff as well as in students is important because teachers are role models and staff is role models and they need somebody to look up to. And it's a lot easier and a lot more comfortable for somebody to either look the same or have the same background. So I believe in equity and I think having inclusivity in the district on all levels is important.
Okay. We're going to move on to question number four. According to a study compiled by Fox Cities Advocates for Public Education, one of the sponsors of this forum, the Wisconsin Parental Choice Program has cost NINA school district taxpayers $3,934,616 in the seven years this program has been in place, dollars that were diverted from public schools. What is your opinion of the Wisconsin Parental Choice Program? What is your opinion of money for public education going to support private schools? What is the board's role in speaking out about this issue? And we'll begin with Ms. Haas.
Hi, and this is a controversial topic for a lot of people. They feel like the money's been taken away from public schools. But every child's entitled to an education, whether it's public or private. And if those private school students were in the public school system, those dollars would be there for them there. I don't understand why they can't be there for them in the private school setting as, as well. I think that, you know, choice is a great opportunity for people and we need not fear people leaving the public school system. If there's a large, you know, group of folks leaving this public school system, I think we need to take a look at why, and that's an opportunity for the school system to look at it and improve and, you know, channel those students back into the public school system. But saying that public school is the only way to do things, I disagree. And I think we need to work to be all together rather than framing it as, you know, taking or stealing the money away from public schools. I certainly don't believe that that's the case at all. Everyone's entitled to choice.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. Mr. Williams, will you please respond?
I do not like this system at all. I feel like if there is public money being used, it should be put into public education. When I was growing up, we had a couple of private schools. They were Catholic schools that I know a lot of my friends went to and they were more affluent or they had a little bit better, a little bit higher income. And they were wanting that system to, they wanted to be there and that's totally their choice to do so. I think if public funds are going to private schools, they need to be under public scrutiny. They should have the same standards and preference and, and references to their schools as they do for the public schools. I fully believe in public schools. I think public schools are their schools as they do for the public schools. I fully believe in public schools. I think public schools are a really strong and solid education system. I feel like we need to fund public schools more to to help alleviate some of the issues that public schools are having. And the underfunding of of public schools has really hurt the system for the last decade. And I think we need to return to funding public schools and making sure any public dollar goes into those public schools.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. And finally, Mr. Epley.
Thank you. I'm going to agree with Mr. Williams here. It's a the question comes down to equity like we were just talking about. You know, while some money comes out of the public system, it still takes quite a bit more money to to put a child in private school. And I don't have anything against the private schools. But the public taxes are for the public good and that money should stay within the public school system. I believe a strong public education system makes for a strong community and we should do everything we can to improve that system. As far as the board's role in that, we do play a role in trying to work with legislators to change things like this at the at the state level. And we've had some of those conversations over the years. Just in the transparency of how this works, one one thing that's been an issue is the money that goes to vouchers on your tax bill is buried in the mill rate with the rest of the public school taxes. We have advocated that that be separated out as a line item, so the public knows where their money is going and and how it's being spent. So we'll continue to work towards those goals.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to question number five. School boards are tasked with making tough decisions about spending limited dollars wisely. There are diverse yet vital instructional needs and now physical plant changes required to ensure health and safety. It's the age of the pandemic after all. Question, what are your priorities in terms of keeping, expanding or cutting programs and services? We'll begin with Mr. Williams.
If we're talking with the pandemic and the services that we have been using like virtual learning, I think virtual learning is a good tool. I think that's something that I think we can expand on for students that have been thriving in virtual learning. I don't think it's the end all be all for every student. I do believe that once we start getting back into the schools and I'm an advocate for making sure staff and and teachers are vaccinated. And I think that's something that the board should look into doing as a community. Once we're back into the school system, I think getting kids back in school and and moving forward, making sure that all the services are there. I think another thing that we might need, we definitely need to look into is mental health counseling and making sure that those services are available to students and staff. Because we've been through a lot in the last year, year and a half and I think we all could benefit in that. So having in school and then also having the option of virtual learning when it needs to be there or when it's a useful tool for students are big things that I'm looking into keeping and expanding.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. And now, Mr. Epley. And by the way, if anyone ever needs to see a question again, we can certainly put that up. So don't be, don't worry about asking to do that.
I was gonna mention, I didn't see the last question. It didn't appear. Said you were sharing, but it was just blank.
Oh, really?
I was gonna ask the same thing. They actually, your screen share didn't quite come up for us. So if you could share it visually for a moment.
I sincerely apologize. See it now?
Yes.
Okay. School boards are tasked with making tough decisions about spending limited dollars wisely. There are diverse yet vital instructional needs and now physical plant change is required to ensure health and safety. What are your priorities in terms of keeping, expanding, or cutting programs and services?
All right. Yes, during the pandemic, we have done a ton of virtual learning. We were actually set up really well in in our district because we already had one-to-one technology for all of our students. So where some school districts were scrambling to find devices for kids, we already had all of that covered. Unfortunately, that makes snow days not as much fun as they used to be, but it puts us in a good position to continue educating students. That ties into the financial stability of our district through lots of wise planning over the years. We have kept ourselves in a position to do that. And having that financial stability helps us to avoid making drastic cuts or changes that we don't want to. Sometimes changes needed in, you know, in the event that student preference changes, for instance, we we may have to change staffing requirements or options that are available. But hopefully we do those for the right reasons and not because we don't have enough money to fund them. Virtual learning is definitely an important thing we we need to maintain. We've seen how that can be helpful in a number of ways. We did look into the idea of creating an online virtual academy. And at this time, there wasn't a huge demand for it. We may revisit that in the future. It could just be that people are tired of virtual learning at the moment, but it could be a useful thing in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Epley. Ms. Haas. We'll just pause for a second, make sure that our just yell at me if I, if something doesn't show up when it's supposed to. From my end, it looked like I was sharing, but.
No, you were certainly trying. It just wasn't quite coming up on our on our side. No problem.
Miss Dre, are you ready?
Yep, ready.
Ms. Haas, you're on.
Okay. I agree with Mr. Epley that Nina was uniquely positioned going into this pandemic, fortunately for the students in families in this community with the number of devices that they had and being ready for that type of situation. You know, I I agree that there was a great deal of foresight, you know, to allow students to continue to be productive as well as, you know, the opportunity to keep the students in school. They really worked hard to to make that happen. As well as, you know, watching the board meetings over the last probably eight to 10 months. You know, I've seen how board members and the school board at NINA have advocated for the teachers and, you know, gone to state legislature asking, you know, for teachers to be put at the top of the list within our district for vaccinations. Should the teachers choose to, you know, accept them? You know, so I think as far as, you know, cutting any of that, obviously, it's a matter of, you know, teacher choice, but I don't think that there's, you know, anything to cut as far as, you know, the tools we're giving our students and the tools we're giving our staff, you know, to provide quality education. I think we've learned a lot from the pandemic, but we're very fortunate, Nina, to be prepared.
Thank you. We're moving on to question number six. Can everybody see that?
No, no, it's not showing.
Why isn't it showing? Okay, let's try this again. I know why. Are you seeing it now?
Nope, spinning death.
Okay.
There, there it is.
All right. Question number six. One factor in creating a high-performing school district is quality instruction. Recruiting and retaining good staff members has become increasingly challenging in recent years. What can the NINA Joint School District do to both recruit top-notch staff as well as keep them working in the district? And we'll begin our question response with Mr. Epley.
All right. Things we've done to address this and I think are are working well, we have the highest starting salary in in our neighboring districts. It kind of aggravates some of our other districts because they have to try to keep up with us. But we've been able to to budget wisely and and keep that, I believe we're at forty-four thousand dollars for a a teacher just starting out. Along with that, we have a good benefits package for all of them. Of course, that fluctuates as as health insurance changes, but it's been going well. And over the last, I believe it's nine years, we've we've been able to give the teachers raises above the Consumer Price Index for for nine years running. So we've been trying our best to to keep it the compensation compensation package at the at the top end for our area and try to keep the teachers here as well as continuing to listen to teachers. We've we've gone through several iterations of review processes and listening to what they liked and didn't like and and making changes to accommodate that and make everyone more comfortable with the process has really been important in teacher job satisfaction.
Thank you very much. Are we ready, timer?
Timer's ready.
Almost ready. Ms. Haas.
I agree that, you know, compensation for our teachers is certainly important. You know, and it's it's the whole package of compensation, as Mr. Epley pointed out. You know, salary increases, health insurance, that kind of thing are all important to obtaining and keeping quality staff. Additionally, I think just as important for most people, regardless of their work environment, whether they're a teacher or in some other type of business is quality of environment that they're involved with and camaraderie with their fellow staff and with the board and administration. It's all the whole package. You know, only one part of a work environment is simply the basic compensation as far as what the wage they take home and, you know, the health benefits they receive. So I think it's important to keep our eyes on the whole package for our teachers so that we can attract them to our school district and to keep them long-term and so that our students get the best from them.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. Mr. Williams.
Yes, I I agree as well. I know teachers and staff are the backbone of this. That's why we're here. That's why we're doing this. I think the compensation package, keeping it above the other districts or pushing the other districts to catch up is a great way to go, and I think we should keep that lead and keep pushing salaries forward and compensation forward. Definitely making sure that everybody is comfortable in their environment as well is is important. And also making sure that we address burnout. I know with any job that you get into, you can experience burnout. And so making sure that there are services available to address that will also be important for the long, the long haul of a teacher and staff.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Williams. We're going to move on to question number seven. Let's see if we can get this to show up this time. Do we have?
No.
Not yet?
Not yet. There it is.
Okay, I'm not sure what the delay is, but now that we know, we'll we'll be patient. Question number seven. According to a study done by the Wisconsin Office of Children's Mental Health, almost sixty percent of students in high school said they experienced depression, anxiety, self-harm, or suicidal thoughts in twenty nineteen. About twenty-nine percent of students said they felt sad or hopeless almost every day. And as the coronavirus pandemic continues, health experts fear those numbers could be even higher. Question, what is your plan to address the mental health needs of students and staff? What resources should be available and where will the money come from? We're going to begin responses with Ms. Haas.
Wow, that is a loaded question right now, given the pandemic and all of the issues that, you know, of loneliness and separation that our teachers and students and, you know, the entire workforce has today. So I would venture to say that, you know, that study being done in twenty nineteen, that the numbers may be higher now. And which makes it ever more important that we address the mental needs of our students and our staff. I've asked some of the, in particular, high school students in NINA about this very question. And they said that, you know, although, you know, they feel this school has provided some information, they're not sure about the quality of the health, mental health that they're, you know, given. They want more than just a phone number on the back of their ID card. I think we need to get in there and provide a personal touch to our students and to our staff rather than just, you know, a survey and asking a question. We need to really, you know, dive into the subject and and understand what it's going to take to really meet them and meet their needs mentally. As far as, you know, how do we pay for that? I'm not sure until we understand exactly what our what our issue is, but we certainly need to address mental health at large and especially given this pandemic.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. Mr. Williams, will you please respond?
My mental health plays a vital role in in everybody. It can either help you succeed or help you struggle. And I know many that have struggled with mental health. I have struggled with mental health. I am an advocate for people to reach out and 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 ask and seek help. I think for with the pandemic and bringing students back into the district and bringing us back to a quote-unquote normalcy, there's gonna be a lot of issues to address with mental health because of, one, just the drastic change from being at home for a year, coming back into a school system. Things like that. I think we need to really dive in and make sure that there's more guidance, counseling type on the schedule for students to make sure that they're touching with somebody, touching in with somebody. And getting more of that kind of staff on on our, in our district, it will be very beneficial. As far as paying for it, this is gonna be a problem, not just for our district, it is a statewide and a nationwide issue. So looking at if if the state can step in and and offer funding with the new budget or even on the federal level when they start doing budgeting to really advocate and push for more mental health.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. And finally, Mr. Epley.
Thank you. And like Tamara said, Tamara said, sorry, this is a really big question. Lots going on here. So a minute and a half is not enough to address it. I will say that, you know, we've again, Nina was well-positioned before the pandemic hit. We have a mental health coordinator, counselors, social workers. We now have social workers at all levels to to help address some of these problems. Of course, we could always have more. For staff, of course, we have EAP resources. For staff, of course, we have EAP resources available and we're trying to encourage people to use those as needed. You know, part of reopening the schools, part of that discussion was to try to stem the tide of the problems that, that we were seeing from people being isolated. Having that interaction on a daily basis at school can really help. Again, the, we would love to increase these programs. The social worker program in particular, we, we got the first one just a few years ago and have increased that slowly. But it's still not enough. I don't know when it will be enough. But again, funding. And so where does the money come from? We continue to work with other legislators and try to explain the, the problems that we're seeing and, and the solutions that we can find and hopefully get them to, to provide the funding we need to do all these programs. And we're applying for all the grants that we can along the way.
Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move on to question eight. Looking at the time, this could be our last question. So let's share. Is it? Spinning.
Nothing.
Let's try this again.
Nope.
Well, fortunately, this is a shorter question, so I will read it and maybe it will show up before I'm finished. High school sports require a good deal of financial support, yet only a small percentage of students participate. Furthermore, most students involved in high school sports are white. How can high school sports become more inclusive? Does that make sense or should we read it again since you weren't able to see it?
Take one more, one more run at it would be great. Thank you.
Maybe another reading. And who's starting this one?
Mr. Williams. High school sports require a good deal of financial support, yet only a small percentage of students participate. Furthermore, most students involved in high school sports are white. How can high school sports be more inclusive? Are we good?
I think so. I think I can move forward on this question.
Okay.
It kind of goes back to equity again, making sure that everybody has the opportunity to do, to do sports if, if they want to or if they choose to do so. I think encouraging people to do sports if they, if there's, if somebody sees potential in somebody in sports. I think that can be a thing that can be pursued. Sports, for me, I, I didn't do a lot of sports in high school, but I, you know, I, we, where I grew up, it was a very diverse crowd and it was awesome to see such inclusivity in sports and I feel like the district can work on that as well.
All right, we'll, we'll go to Mr. Epley, please.
Thank you. This is an interesting question that I was not expecting and I'm not entirely sure how to go about answering it. You know, many of our sports don't necessarily have a limit on the number of students that can participate. I'm thinking of cross-country and wrestling and swimming, I believe, as well. It's, it's open to anyone who wants to participate. Of course, there are some team sports that have limits. So how can we be more inclusive? I guess, as Mr. Williams said, the question of equity and do we need better representation among our coaching staff or, or teachers involved? I think the other thing about Nina that I guess makes me wonder about where this question is coming from is the number of extracurriculars we offer. Not every kid wants to do sports. You know, I've, I've got three and, and one of them might be kind of into sports, but the team thing really isn't his deal and the other ones just aren't into it. But all of the other extracurriculars we have available seem much more appealing to them. So I'm not denying that people like sports. But, you know, we, we have a lot to offer our students, a lot of different great programs. And we have students that excel in many of them. We just celebrated a whole bunch of debate and forensic students at the last meeting that took state and national awards, I believe. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Epley, and we'll finish with Ms. Mrs. Haas, please.
I'm gonna probably continue a little bit of Mr. Epley's thought on that from the last board meeting where with the debate group. One of the questions the school board member asked was, you know, what was the makeup of the team and found that it was a majority of female participants in the debate. And so I think it's important to highlight that, that, you know, what they choose to participate in is the students choose to participate in is not at the control of the school board, certainly. And, you know, is the, because it's a majority of white students in Nina, but is the makeup of those participating in sports or any other extracurricular activity representative of the community of students at large? So if the community of students at large is mostly white, one would expect that, you know, majority of them would be white participating in an activity, but there may be some activities that a certain group of students finds more interesting and more attractive. And I wonder if, you know, saying that athletes in Nina are mostly white is applicable to all activities or in even all sports within the district.
Thank you very much. We are coming close to seven o'clock, so rather than begin another round of questions, if it's all right with you, I think we'll try one more time to do a screen share and do a little plug for this new website that our voters should definitely be aware of. Do we have the screen yet?
No screen.
It's really curious because this has never happened ever.
Sometimes it just takes a minute.
Do we have a big purple screen?
No, we still have spinning death.
Well, I want to take this opportunity to thank each one of you for agreeing to participate in tonight's forum. It's been really interesting to hear your views on a very wide variety of subjects. We really appreciate that. And I wish you well. The slide that we're not able to see is about Vote411. This is a new website that is brought to you by the League of Women Voters Education Fund. They're one of our co-sponsors of the forum. And so Vote411 is committed to continuing to provide voters with a one-stop-shop nonpartisan information for both general and state-specific elections. So please visit www.vote411.org for more information. Also, I want to say to our Nina citizens who are watching, it's your turn. You've heard the candidates. Please do vote on April 6th or earlier by mail. Your vote is important and we want to encourage everybody to, to vote for their school board, whether you have children in the system or not. Thank you very much to each of our candidates, Mr. Epley, Mrs. Haas, Mr. Williams. Thank you to Debbie Drayer for doing the timing and good evening.
Thank you all.
And, Anna, can we point out one thing to our voters to, to understand that there are three positions for school board that they are voting for? They did, they need not just vote for one candidate. There are four of us running and there are three open positions.
Thank you for mentioning that, Mrs. Haas. I should have said that at the outset. So yes, we get to vote for three people. There are four candidates, three seats. So make your vote count, Nina. Thank you and good night, Mr. Epley, Mr. Williams, and Mrs. Haas.
Thank you very much.